Welcome you to the August 5, 2019 Salina City Commission meeting. Call the meeting to order and ask for roll call.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I think we have managed to create a nice alternating pattern of no necktie, tie, no necktie, tie, no necktie, tie, no necktie. So this was planned. We will move first to actually our citizens forum. This is, I'm sorry. I just.
Roll call?
Oh, we did that.
We did that.
I hope. Okay.
It gets worse when you get up to over 65.
During this time, you can address the commission on any item not on the agenda. And as always, don't expect us to give magic answers to difficult questions. And limit your comments to five minutes, please. Thank you. Name for the court.
Yeah, I'm Phil Black. I live at 815 Spruce in Salina. On April 22, this city commission decided by a 3-2 vote to postpone the study of a potential ban on single-use plastic bags. Now, I have a friend who works at the Small Dillens over at Sunset Plaza, and she tells me they go through between 33,000 and 34,000 bags per week. And just do an easy math, times the three stores, that's about 100,000 bags a week. Since that time, 13 weeks ago, that you chose not to do anything, to me, that comes up to about 1.3 million bags into our environment. Of course, I'm being conservative here, and you will never hear me say that normally. So, anyway. The problem I have is that on, in May 2016, we passed what's called, I'm gonna try to get this right, a special-purpose retailer's sales tax at .75 percent, replacing one that was .40 percent. Ostensibly, part of that money was to go to bring our river back to life. And my concern is that one of the problems we have with the river is a great deal of single-use plastic bags that get into the drains and muck it all up. So here's the deal. It's ironic, on the one hand, that we voted to give you that money to correct that problem, but on the other hand, by not doing anything, we've added 1.3 million bags, again, I'm being conservative, that's twice I've said it, to the problem. Now, what I've heard is this is a very complicated issue. It takes a lot of time and effort. I get all that, but really, Mexico City with a population of 8 million was able to pass a ban on single-use plastic bags. In America, we had Chicago, Boston, Seattle, San Francisco, Los Angeles, they all passed bans. In fact, the entire state of California passed a ban, as did the state of Hawaii. And now, Canada has passed a ban. So seriously, it's hard to imagine that a city the size of 48,000 or less, it's just too complicated for us to even talk about it. Now, listen, I know all of you individually, sarcasm aside, okay? And I know that you're not here for a career move, and I know you're not here to make a lot of money. You're here to do, to give back to the community, and I appreciate that. It may come at it from different ways, but that's your, what you're trying to do. I'm in the same boat, because I can't get young people to run for the Kansas House, so I decided to run. And one of the problems I run into there is that I'm expected to come up with between 30,000 and 50,000 pieces of campaign literature. How many people like campaign literature? Raise your hand. You love it, right? Tell the truth, child. You love it, right? I know, I'm like you. I don't like it either. So what I've decided to do is address the single-use plastic bag problem by handing out these 100% recycled material shopping bags. Now, the Wall Street Journal says that the average family of four puts out, or takes about 15 bags per shopping trip. So if I could get enough of these stupid bags into, say, 1,000 families' hands, that would be 150,000 bags off the street, single-use plastic bags, each time they go shopping. I don't know if I'm gonna win or lose, you know, I'm a Democrat, right? But if I lose, if I can get those bags out of the environment, then I'll feel like I've done something good. And that's, to me, what politics should be about, is doing something good for the community. The other thing I've decided to do is I put my name on the, what's it called, the Solid Waste Committee, which as I understand it, that falls under the general category of citizens advisory boards. I looked up the ordinance where those were established, just to make sure I understood what they did. I learned something from it. The city does have representation on the boards, but guess who runs them? You guys do. So by my estimation, if you were to appoint me to that board, and you were to give us an agenda, to come up with a plan, to approach, at least talk about the single-use plastic bag ban, then maybe we could get something done. Regardless, to do nothing is to keep adding millions of these bags in to our environment. So at the very least, what I'd like to see us do is to think about this. And, because if we don't do it, then we're not addressing the problem, we're becoming the problem. And so in my mind, I'd like, I don't know about you, I don't want to be the problem, I'd like to be the solution. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabriella O'Dowd.
I'm Tatum Hoard.
And I'm Tyra Beck.
And we are from Girl Scout Troop 657 from Wichita, Kansas. And we are here to present and inform you about our project and what we're doing. So basically, we created a wooden box so that people from the community, which is Salina, can drop off worn-down flags to the box. That way, Girl Scout troops can sign up and perform a flag retirement ceremonies with the flags that are inside of the box.
The items that are included are a tutorial video on how to perform the ceremony, the signup sheet, and a script. The box will be located at the St. John's Lutheran Church temporarily by the Girl Scout Office, and we're hoping to put it down at the entrance by the church office. And it will be open to the public during business hours.
We would like to ask your permission to put our flyers around the building and the employee break rooms. We thank you for giving us your time today and for the support you gave us. And we'd also like to thank all the people who have already dropped off our flags in the flag box. We now ask if you have any questions.
I, that's a wonderful idea, but stay right there, because I'm gonna try to get you an answer to a question. As magnanimous as we look, we don't actually run this building. How would permission to put those flyers up be?
I think it would go through the building authority, and I can get them that point of contact, but as you mentioned, this building's owned in partnership between the city and the county, and there's a separate group that actually owns and manages the building. So I can get you that contact information.
All right. Any questions?
This is for your silver award, right?
Yes, correct.
Very good. I think it's, I think it's great. I think it's a, it's a, it's a big step to take. I know that the VFW for years have helped with the flag retirement and do stuff like that. You guys stepping in, helping with it too, can, can really make a difference. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Tanya Greer, and I'm here on behalf of my two dogs, Starlet and Capone. I moved back to Salina in May, well, in December of 2017. I lost my sight in May of 2017, which caused me to have to come back to Salina. I had a home here. I have two emotional support animals. And due to an incident that happened in August of 2018, my dogs were removed from my care. They were held at the shelter for nearly eight months. And during that time period, I was not allowed to see them until I went to court. And then, within my 14-day appeal, I was able to see them until the appeal went through and I went to district court. My dogs, I would not own a dangerous dog, and my dogs play a big part in my health. Since I've been blind, they, they're my safety, my security. I live in a very small house at 915 Maple Avenue, which I bought in 96. I moved to Colorado in 1998 and lived there for nearly 20 years. When I lost my sight in May, I ended up having to sell my home in Loveland, Colorado, and come back to the state of Kansas where my family resides, my mother, who's 76-years-old. In the meantime, my dogs were at the Salina Animal Shelter for eight months due to a circumstance on August 11 of 2018, where somebody was on my property, damaged my property, tried to get my attention, and I didn't call 911 in time, I felt. I did get through to them, but by then, I was ready to run, and I fled from my home and there, and let my dogs go with me. However, they remained on my property at the time that they were caught by the animal I ended up going to jail. I was arrested with, for reasons I'm not sure, but I guess my main concern is I have these dogs listed with the U.S. Registry as my emotional support animals. And I also have two doctor letters stating, from my mental therapist and my physician, stating the importance of my animals. Neither dog is breed-specific, but I want to stand on behalf of the rest of families that have lost their, their loved one. We treat these animals as if they're our children. And with these dogs being my emotional support animals, I depend on them for my safety, my security, and my recovery. I did have a cornea transplant in April of this year, and right now, it's not rejected, but it's in the healing process. And I really don't have a lot of family support to get me to places I need to go, so I usually stay home alone and, and go to my doctor appointments in Wichita as needed. These dogs play a big role. They go to bed with me at night, they wake up with me in the morning, they give me purpose, they give me safety, security, and companionship. For I don't have the luxury of eyes to see and go and do as I please, so I stay home a lot. And I just ask that my dogs be allowed to stay with me. And, you know, I, I know that there's a pit bull ban, I understand, but I also know that it's really not the dog that's at fault here. And a lot of people are losing their animals based upon this legislation. And these, a lot of these dogs are good dogs, and I just feel that the people that own these dogs should be held accountable for bad behavior. My Starlet and Capone are well-behaved dogs, they're not deemed vicious, they're not deemed a nuisance, and they play the sole purpose of my well-being and my health. And I just ask the, the commission to, city council to reconsider maybe lifting the ban or altering the ban, so, so so many families don't lose what we consider our children. I have doctor letters, and I have registration, I have a medical record for my sight from my, my corneal specialist, Dr. Trong, in, in Wichita. And these dogs were with me before I became blind. They've been with me since I lost my sight. So I just asked the courts and, and the commissioner to reconsider and, and see if I can't get my da, dogs and bring them back home to me. I, I do plan on moving back to Colorado due to the circumstances, but I don't want to go without them. And one of them is incarcerated right now at the animal shelter, and.
I'm assuming that part of the issue with the dogs is still in the court system?
Yeah, the whole.
We don't, I don't.
I'm sorry.
I don't necessarily go to the specifics, because, well, they're, the court system is different from, from us.
Right, right.
And, and was, were they removed because they were pit bulls?
They were, well, the, I got a ticket for no rabies vaccination. They are being considered pit bull, but I have all veterinarian information stating their breed, which is American Bulldog and Part Boxer. And then Starlet is Blue Heeler Aussie, and she has a little bit of, uh, blue-nose pit, whatever that is. So, but I know.
Considering that this is partly in, still in the court, are any suggestions as to what we might do to, not necessarily give you everything you want, because we can't do that right now, obviously.
I understand.
But at least get her some answers.
Two observations I was gonna share is that the Animal Control Advisory Board has recommended that the pit bull ban be repealed, so that is a recommendation that'll be coming to you. Staff is currently staffing that through with the intention of sharing with the Animal Control Advisory Board at their August meeting, an outline of the breadth of the, the staff report that would be provided to you on that topic. So I don't have a date for you yet, but in the very near future, that question should be coming before you. I think you're, you're absolutely right in terms of whether being a court matter, I'm a little hesitant. I don't, I don't know the details well enough to speak to them, and there is a process, both in terms of if you have a pit bull, removing it from the community, as well as kind of the, just the process for code violation. So the best I'd be able to do is, is try to track down any questions, answer any questions that you might have, but that needs to run its course in, in court.
Right. Thank you so much for coming and.
Okay. Is that it? Thank you.
We can get you some, some information which may help you. Yeah. Anyone else? Thank you.
Daniel Eckhoff, 655 Highland. First, I'd like to say I agree with, I think we should talk about, at least talk about a breed-specific ban repeal. I know that's been recommended by the advisory board, and it's also recommended by the top animal associations, so I think research is on your side in that matter. I'd also like to think, I don't know if it's the street department or whoever takes care of it, but the progression of stoplights that we're putting in the yellow flashing signal. I know there seems to be quite a few people that disagree with me on that, but anything we can do to improve traffic flow in this town, I appreciate it. Traffic here is awful. I've lived several cities in Kansas. Going 30 in a 40 on South Ninth drives me crazy, so when I can get places faster, I really do appreciate it. One further comment on the stoplights. I'd like you guys to look into the possibility of using retro reflective tape on the back of stoplights. I don't know if that's something we've looked into or not, but it's a very cheap solution that.
Could you explain what that is?
So you've probably been in, I believe Wichita has them. It's, so on a stoplight, there's a reflective white, or reflective yellow tape around the stop, uh, stoplights, so that just increases visibility of the stoplights. A lot of people, when they're driving, they kind of space out, and so that contrast draws their eyes. It's also useful to colorblind people driving at night. And it also has shown, I'm not sure how valid the studies have been, but independent cities have done studies, and safety increases, so decreases in wrecks have been around 15% to 40%. So for a $1,500 solution per intersection, I think that's something we should look into. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm guessing whichever department head in our city would need to hear that, investigate it, has heard it, and thank you. Anyone else? Probably, this was not a queue, but did the other commissioners get these in your black bags for the meeting? I'm the only one.
The census.
But says census 2000.
The census informed us that they're not, they're not spending money on swag this year, but we got one bag, so.
Oh. It's not plastic. And one bag.
And you did mention the other day, you had some questions about census.
Yes.
So Emily, whose last name I cannot remember, who is the regional community outreach coordinator for the census, met with our count committee the other day, so ran those folks through what we need to be doing to prep for the census and looking a little bit at scheduling. So Dustin Herr with our office is kind of putting together an action plan, getting back together with the count committee, making sure we're all on the same page, and then we'll start doing some outreach to different groups. Not so much a door-to-door, as far as maybe city staff or some of those organizations, certain populations, that might be a method, but there are a lot of other methods that the census shared with us. Everything from contacting the universities and asking us if, you know, if we could put reminders up on Megatron, you know, boards, reaching out through church newsletters. There were a lot of other methods that they kind of shared with us on how to kind of get that information out. This is also gonna be the first census, which you'll be able to respond online. So they also talked to us about just kind of how to help pe, help inform people on this new method, so more than likely, we'll probably be putting together just a website that's got connections to links and additional information, for sure.
Do we have anything, an upcoming, agenda, upcoming agenda in which we could get a update during the meeting, just to advertise?
I suppose we can report it in other business. I thought you were headed to study sessions, and I know we have a lot of those scheduled.
Okay, but is, there is one?
Uh, there isn't one scheduled, but we can, we can continue to offer you an update, if you like.
Yeah, we, as soon as we've got our action plan, our, our sense was to share that with the city manager and get that into the packet so that the community could see what we would be doing moving forward. And I could easily present, you know, a little something during a regularly scheduled meeting. I'm not quite sure if it needs a full study session.
Well, I'm sorry, I've got the only one of these. But they are, not necessarily the census bags, but the bags themselves are all the rage on the East Coast. Just got back from Washington, DC, and everybody leaves home with their bags under their arm, and it's just the way life is. Let's move on to public hearings, 5.1.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on the Proposed 2020 Budget for the City of Salina. 5.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 19-11013, Adopting and Appropriating the 2020 Annual Budget.
Good afternoon, Mr. Ryan Commissioners. As you know, we've been going through the budget process for several months, and even though we've had multiple study sessions, and the public is always welcome to attend those sessions, Kansas State statute does require that we hold a formal public hearing on the proposed budget, and a notice be put in the papers 10 days prior to that, that hearing. We put a notice in the Salina Journal on July 26 and included today's date and time for the hearing, as well as we provided the, the maximum limits that the budget would provide for ad lorm taxes and the levies that will be issued. The maximum mill levy was published at 29.719 mils. The final proposed 2020 budget includes total expenditures of $103,922, $22,920, which is comparable to 2019, which was $110,679,866, which included a fund balance reserve of a little bit over $6.5 million. So overall, taking out that $6.5 million, the 2020 budget is just under what we had budgeted in 2019. The final 2020 proposed budget, as I mentioned, does establish a mill levy of 29.719 mils, which is 1.3205 mils, uh, increase over 2019's mill levy. That mill levy will allocate to the two funds, General Fund, $10,263,795, and to the Bond and Interest Fund, $3,052,051, for a total ad lorm tax of $13,315,846. I did mention in here that total valuation of real estate, personal property, and all other property tax did increase 4.27% for this 2019 valuation. Of that growth, real estate excluding the deduction for TIF and pending exemptions accounted for 4.06% growth, while the loss of personal property value is about 7.69% in 2019. And as you recall, that was from the 2006 law that exempted new commercial personal property. The value of new development added 1.43% to the 2019 valuation, and that increased value on existing property increased about 3.68%. As a reminder, that 2006 legislation has cost the city in valuation, it went from $9,345,000 in 2018 to $8.6 million in 2019 for the 2020 budget. Since its inception, it's cost the city of Salina a little over $875,000 in tax revenue. In 2020, that loss equated to about $20,000 in tax revenue. As you recall, in our study sessions, restoration of fund balances to appropriate levels remains our priority. At the close of business, of, close of 2018, the general fund balance was about $4.84 million, moving towards its target of $8.5 million. The projected 2019 ending fund balances is anticipated to be about $6.2 million. The 2020 budget, however, does not assume any significant growth in this fund balance. As far as staffing is concerned, this 2020 budget authorizes 489 position, full-time positions, which is two over the 2019 number of 487. One is a public education position in sanitation, and one is a deputy director position in utilities. Salary projections assume table, stable turnover and vacancy levels. It also provides an allowance for a 2% playpen adjustment on January 1, 2020. Part of the budget is also the comprehensive fee schedule. As we reviewed that, we noted that the price, the cost of fees was gonna go up 2% to 3%. Some, a couple of the notable fee changes were the Smoky Hill River Festival increase from $15, or from $10 to $15, and 15 to 20 at the gate. We also left that with options to be investigated and to come before commission for at future, a future date. Sanitation fees were proposed to remain the same. Solid waste fees were proposed to remain the same. However, the tonnage was reduced from 560 to 540 pounds. The 2020 line item schedule also included, sorry, I should've said this earlier, a Sunday admission for the Smoky Hill River Festival. As you remember, adjustments to water and wastewater and golf and parks will be deferred till later in the year. The annual budget provides the plan and authorization of resources for the operation of the city of the, the city for services. There are two actions required to, for tonight's presentation. One is conduct, conduct a public hearing, and one is to consider resolution, or Ordinance Number 1911013, which will be considered for final passage at the regular commission meeting on August 12, along with the other legislative actions relating to the budget adoption. Further options you have, you can amend the budget, or you can postpone the budget, the consideration of this ordinance, which would need to be approved before August, on August 12, in order for us to meet our August 25 deadline with the. Staff obviously recommends option B, to pass on first reading this ordinance. And if you have any questions or comments, I could certainly answer those, or the public.
Start from the right. Any questions?
I don't, I don't think I have any questions at this, at this time, but I would like to thank you and Tara for doing an outstanding job of presenting the budget over the study sessions this year. I felt like it was, it was really helpful and helped me gain a little bit more competency in understanding the complex city finances, so thank you for that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioner Hoppick?
I have gone over some of my questions with, with Mr. Greg. I do have one question. On the general fund, at the end of 2020, we show 6.2, and then when I go back to the I noticed it still showed a balance of 4.6. I know we're gonna be discussing under 7.1, so does that take into consideration the non-funding?
No, we did not include that in that, in this budget, because we had not gotten that approved. So we were still looking at that number from the past.
That's what I.
That's correct.
Say if I wanna make sure.
Yep. Yep.
That's my main one.
Any other questions?
Just one question. Is the, is that me doing that? Oh, okay. Does the public hearing open and close today or does it continue to next week?
I can hear you, we're static.
I feel like I'm doing it.
[music]
It's my understanding, and I'm looking to be sure that if anybody wishes to correct me, that this is an independent public hearing that you would open and presumably close yet today unless there was some circumstance that caused you to want to extend it.
Thank you. Now, in that case, I guess.
Daniel, I fell off the city of Iowa Highland. I, just a quick comment. Um, I'm pretty disappointed as far as the River Festival, the increase in the button prices. I'm, I guess bummed we couldn't find another solution for that. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, just a five-dollar increase for one person, taking families to those, that can get pretty expensive. Wish we could have found another solution for that and I don't know if we still have time to look at that, the ordinances, but, uh, or I'm not sure, maybe we haven't, but if we could take another look at that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Why, really kind of budgeted about 25 minutes in my mind for this, but, uh, all right. In that case, we will close the public hearing on the 2020 budget. Any action, questions, comments from the Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Moved and seconded to, through the 2020 budget discussion.
A brief remark, if that's all right.
I'm gonna have to be brief.
No, no. You know better than to tell me it doesn't have to be brief. Um, I think it's my mic, so apologies if, if the feedback. First of all, I just wanted to say I'm glad that we were able to establish a balanced budget, um, that, and that we have a solution for, um, increasing our, our general fund reserves for, for next year. So, thank you. I know that that was not easy and I know that a lot of departments were asked to make pretty significant cuts in their budget. Um, the second thing is, um, I'm glad that we were able to get a 2 percent cost of living adjustment for employees because that's been long overdue and we have not been able to do that in the past. So, um, hopefully, even though this year it's funded through property tax, hopefully we will be able to find an ongoing way to keep that, um, moving forward so that we remain competitive within the work, workforce marketplace. Um, and again, thank you to, um, the finance department for all the information and their patience in answering my questions. But I, I, I'm, I'm really torn on, on, on this budget decision because for the good things that, that I pointed out that we've done, I think that something that it points out to me is, um, based on the, um, capital improvements and project priority list that city manager, Scrag, asked us to, um, submit earlier. I, I haven't seen my fellow commissioners' priority lists, but just judging by the way that the conversations progressed, I think I'm completely out of step with the rest of the, the governing body. My other concerns are that, my concerns about those, some of those projects are that we're continuing down paths of some major projects that maybe don't reflect our demographic trends or what our absolute needs are at this time. As previous audits have noted, we continue our heavy reliance on sales tax during a time when sales tax collections statewide are declining and our regional population is declining. And, um, I would like to mention that in our city manager update this week, um, we've even gone so far as talking about, um, having some kind of an audit of our sales taxes to see, uh, why our receipts are not up to, to standard and I, you know, we can, we can talk sometime about whether that's a good investment or not, but it's something that a lot of communities, um, are facing, especially, um, in rural states. Um, and I think that it's also important that something that Mr. Black mentioned earlier, when we increased our sales tax rate, um, sometimes the, the law of unintended consequences is that you're going to see people going to other communities or making their, for bigger purchases or making those online. Now, we've been really generous with economic development support, in my opinion, and incentives like IRBs, but a, a concern I have is what effects have the IRBs that we've given away had on our sales tax collections? Well, I know we've made some projections at the, at the, at the beginning of the project about how much we expected those, um, that impact to be, um, but when you start looking at the IRBs, the, the star bonds, um, the, the revenue that we're, that we're, you know, giving away now in the present day and in the future, um, I think that our sales tax is, is, is not going to be maybe a really steady, reliable source for, um, for our revenue stream. And while I would like to commend all the individual departments who've made cuts, I've just yet to see us make any significant decisions or give really tough guidance about making, you know, a difficult call and being able to say, um, no, or let's pump the brakes. So I just want to apologize to staff because I think you get a lot of conflicting direction from us, but, um, thank you for your hard work and please know that, I, I still don't know how I'm going to vote on this budget, but I guess I have about 15 seconds to, to figure that out. But please know that it is not in any way, shape or form a reflection on the work that you've performed, um, getting us to, to a balanced budget for 2020. Thanks.
Appreciate those comments and I, I think one thing that we will want to do during the year is keep track of our budgeting process 12 months a year, not just two or three months a year, so that we can be flexible and, and, and change when, when necessary. Gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Okay, in that case, it's, it's been moved and seconded to, I'll read this off the white sheet, I think it flows better there, to, uh, adopt ordinance number 19 dash one one zero one three, comma, adopting and appropriating the 2020 annual budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. And this will be brought back for second reading, August the 12th. We can now move to the consent agenda.
Item six point one, approve the minutes of July 22nd, 2019.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve, uh, consent agenda, um, item number six point one.
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Thank you. Administration, seven point one.
Item seven point one, resolution number one nine dash seven seven two four, authorizing staff to temporarily suspend the monthly transfer of fund, funds from the city's operating account to the health and dental insurance trust fund from July 2019 through December 2019 to better maintain targeted balances in those funds.
Good afternoon, again. Thank you. Uh, the city of Salina has had a self-funded health insurance since 1997. Self-funding means that the city has a fund designated for health insurance and covers related expenses rather than purchasing, um, fully insured coverage directly from insurance companies. I think it's this one that's having a problem. The city, uh, with fully insured plans, monthly premiums are set by insurance companies based on the plans and are selected for the group. With a self-funded model, the city and plan participants contribute premiums on a monthly basis to the health insurance fund and the fund is used to pay third-party administrators who manage the plan and to pay claims, purchase stop-loss insurance and to pay relevant Affordable Care Act fees. The plan also allows for outside parties to participate. Those groups in the city of Salina plan are Salina Public Library, Salina Housing Authority, Salina Airport Authority, and our retirees. Staff uses a variety of reports and data, um, to track where the plan is, what, how we're doing with the plan, our expenses, our revenues each year, and we look at those numbers on a monthly basis to see how the, the fund is performing. The chart that I provided shows that, where the health fund balance is as of this, as of today. At the end of 2018, the fund balance in the health fund was three million, one hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. The targeted, the projected fund for 2019 fund balance was three million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Resolution 97 dash fifty one oh four was passed in, on July 13th, 1997, establishing the health and dental insurance trust fund, or the health fund, and providing for funding of that fund. As part of that resolution, it established that the revenue for the fund shall be generated by charges for health and dental insurance deducted from employee salaries provided by charges against operating funds in proportion to the established plan. Section five of that resolution states that in the event that the resources of the fund are inadequate, to pay claims and costs and maintain sufficient reserves, additional amounts may be transferred from the operating funds as necessary to maintain fiscal solvency of the fund. This is important as we make this decision because, as we're trying to point out, is that if there's a problem with the fund, it's the operating funds that have to pay the back, the backstop on that. Currently, the city employee share of the funds is about 20 percent of their premium. The city pays about 80 percent of that. I provided those numbers here. For example, an employee, um, a single employee has a share of a hundred and eighteen dollars a month and the city pays 474 dollars a month on that premium. Since inception of the health fund, revenue has been deposited into the health fund at the end of each payroll. The sources of the, of the deposits include the total of each employee's share and the transfer from the operating accounts equal to the aggregate of the city's share of that health insurance. The health fund, we established a target fund balance this year for the health fund of two million dollars. As the table provided, the health fund balance at the end of 2018 was three million, one twelve, four oh seven. Our budget projections and actual experience thus far in 2019 show that it'll be approaching about four million dollars. Recognizing that the city makes annual payments from its operating funds of approximately 5.6 million dollars, um, and the fund balance was significantly higher than the target, the cit, the staff consulted with city manager's office and legal, um, to kind of determine where, what our options were as far as, one, maintaining the balance a little lower and helping the general fund to get, um, to address some of the issues that they were having in that fund balance. While the resolution does not address transfer of funds out of the fund, it does address a potential for the shortfall, as I mentioned in a little bit earlier, and has a self-insured plan by providing that the additional amounts were transferred from the operating funds in case of fiscal solvency. With the operating fund serving as the backstop, as we mentioned, it stands to reason that the temporary suspension of transfers from the operating fund to the health fund is the best means to, of maintaining target fund balance, particularly when the general fund is running below its target. Consequently, in order to adjust operating fund contributions in light of the health fund balances in excess of target, the option to pause transfers from the operating accounts to, of the city, the employer's portion of the premiums only is being recommended. The table that, the next table that I provided showed you what the premiums were that had been deposited into the account for the first five months of 2019. As you can see, the total for all operating funds is a little over two million dollars for that five-month period. So what we're projecting is that at the end of the year, the, the health fund would be reduced by about two million dollars and based on our projections, it would still come within and pretty close to that two million dollar, um, target. The general fund on the, however, could help, could help reach that 6.2 million dollar target that we're looking for compared to its eight and a half million dollar target. Staff has identified the following options for city commissions' consideration. Approve resolution 197724. Approve the resolution with amendments as you deem appropriate. Postpone the consideration of resolution 197724 to a specific date and time and provide us with direction regarding any additional amendments or information that you would like to request for further consideration or vote to deny resolution 197724. Result.
[inaudible]
There's no, uh, loss of coverage for any employee?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Nothing here.
All right. Nice, Mayor. Commissioner Hodges.
Um, I think the, the only question I have, and I don't know if it's a, if it's a question for you or, or Ms. Fisher, but, um, the insurance company is the one that sets our, our premiums, correct? I mean, in terms of the, the premium cost, because I mean, the, first of all, I think this is a, is, I'm really glad we're able to pause, um, these contributions and build up our, um, our general fund, but I guess my question was, would, would there ever be a point, what I'm trying to lead to is, would there ever be a point where we would consider decreasing premiums so that we aren't kind of using our health fund as, um, like a, a revenue source for other things? If that makes sense.
Yeah, so, good evening. Um, the, the insurance company doesn't specifically set.
Pull the.
Okay. The insurance company doesn't specifically set our premiums. They set fees that we have to pay them, um, in addition to fees to administer our plan. The stop-loss is rolled into that. The, the math behind it is the city's work in trying to estimate, um, what the premiums need to be to set aside the pot of money that we are estimating based on trend, based on national averages, based on a lot of different things that we say we are going to need to be able to cover our employees for the benefit year. So as far as a decrease, that is a possibility.
I was, yeah, I mean, I was just thinking, if it's something that, you know, and we must be one of the few organizations that isn't just seeing like double-digit increases in, um, our, our claims, which is fantastic, but it was just a thought maybe for future years, if we see this trend continuing, that maybe it would be nice to have a discussion about, um, reducing premiums or, um, I think it's my, I don't know who it is, but I'm nervous about talking. Or, you know, looking at some things like the 10 percent administrative fee that we charge for former employees, but, you know, just something to kind of.
No, it, staff is committed to that. It, what we need to really do is look at kind of our experience over time and if, if we experience a good year, that might represent a windfall, but if we can see a trend, then we start to have the opportunity to look at adjusting our rates. We don't want to be overly aggressive and find ourselves.
Right.
Having, you know, reduced rates or setting too, too low, but we, HR staff does a lot of monitoring on a monthly basis and then we coordinate pretty closely with our insurance provider and our consultant to look at those at year-end.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? Yep, none, bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve resolution number one nine seven seven two four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution one nine dash seven seven two four. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Thank you, and we'll move to seven point two.
Item seven point two, resolution number one nine dash seven seven two one, authorizing an agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation, Transportation for Transportation Alternatives Project for the Smoky Hill River Renewal Greenway Trail and an agreement with HDR of Kansas City for consultant design services related there to city project number nine zero zero three seven.
Mr. Stack, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a, I guess on September 9th, I guess is the place to start out. We applied for a grant to KDOT for a transportation alternatives program and we did, um, we were successful in getting some money, not. successful in getting some money, not a lot, but some. We asked for quite a bit more, but we were able to get $167,000 at least as a grant from KDOT, and on March 25th, we accepted that and said we would we would pledge matching funds. Basically, it's an 80%, 20% match, so we have to pledge at least 20% from the city, and the funds are available for that project. So we have now got a KDOT city-state agreement that we have to sign to agreement for this project, basically, as well as we have are on a fairly strict or very tight timeline to actually build the project. So we're excited about that, because we feel like maybe we will actually get something built with the river project, kind of the long-term river project that's been for in the works for a while. We may be able to get a trail built by next year, and so that's the hope, is that we would be aggressive and that we would design it and get it built by next year. So to do that, we felt like HDR is the design firm that we hired for the river project, went through a major professional services selection process to hire them to do a master plan for the city for the river, Smokey River Renewal, and thought it was just basically a part of that project would be to develop, instead of they're they're doing 20 to 30% design plans, we need 100% plans for this portion of the trail. So we, with the with the type of schedule and with the fast track of this project, we'd hire them or extend a portion of this contract to design and and get these plans to 100%. So they the timeline, their agreement's in here, the timeline's in here, the scope is in here, so for their portion of of the design, they're asking for about, let's see, the number is 40, I guess I don't have the number here, though I did. Anyway, they're asking for an extra so many thousand dollars to $47,000 to design this project and meet this deadline, and I feel like that was reasonable. There we go, I found it. Total of $49,590 for design to meet the KDOT timeline and get this to final design for a concrete trail from the Smokey River, along the Smokey River from Ohio to around the YMCA. And the reason this the city portion is probably going to be more than 20%, we're going to have to add in some money for just, it's a it's a fairly complex area of the trail, whereas there's some private property we have to to work with, there's the old river channel is is very wooded, so there's a lot of extra work there. Let's see, the part of the areas on the YMCA property as well as some park property that was platted, so we won't have to at least buy, you know, look at getting property for the whole trail, but but some of it we will. So we've estimated around an extra $300,000 for that work, for design, for right-of-way, and anything else that we'd have to do to construct the project. So the total budget for the project under the sub-CIP, or the CIP actually, was $467,000, and that that took into account the amount we'd have to pay HDR to actually design the project. I guess I'll stand for questions, any other questions? This is kind of a complex agreement with KDOT, but it's typical agreement with KDOT, city attorney's review, the agreement with HDR for extra money to help us get this design to 100% and to meet the KDOT schedule with the KDOT criteria.
If if something like this goes over private property, do we do we have to purchase a portion of the property, or do we have to get a right-of-way from them? How does how does that work?
Possibly either one of those. So we've we've discussed, you know, what is this, this will be that probably the first project along the river with private property involved, and so we'll have to go through what that's going to look like, what is it, is it fee simple, is it right-of-way, is it easement? Those are the things that we'll have to determine, and we've had some preliminary discussions about that, and those will be, probably have to get worked out here before long. Greg, do you want to add anything to that? We've talked about it, I don't know if we've come in for a landing, is the way Greg would say on that, but we're...
Whether you're purchasing ground or an easement or whatever, is is that included in this cost?
It was a, yes, it is. We we came up with kind of a ballpark estimate on, you know, if we have to go to land acquisition and what that might cost, so yeah, that's Martha Tasker. Martha helped us with this budget, and yeah, she's not here today.
Is this a maximum, then? Is there a contingency? I mean, is there a contingency? Because I guess my question is, we don't know what that ground could cost us if we have private ground to purchase.
Yeah, I would say we have a budget placeholder, but when this is authorized, we're going to be out meeting with the property owner, it's about design and alignment and dedication and acquisition, and we'll know more as we go out and finalize the plans and the conversations.
Then I then I guess my final question would be, the $300,000 that we would we would be spending, that is coming out of the special sales tax that was set aside for the river? So basically, we're collecting that now, and that's where these dollars are to be spent. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a very basic question, and I apologize, but I did I did look through here. What what material is the path going to be made out of it? Is it like the crushed rock stuff, or is it concrete?
Concrete.
Okay, awesome. And then how mu, I mean, I know we're doing seven miles with this, and when I look at the map, how many miles do we have to do total? I mean, this this gets a nice chunk of it done, but I didn't know how many...
Yeah, 7.4 miles is, you know, the river channel approximately, so that's, the trail would be kind of paralleling that, or how many?
6.8.
6.8, okay.
Yeah, I think the seven-mile reference is for the build-out of the trail, but this won't fund the full seven miles of it.
No, this is just a portion.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you, because I was looking at that, and I was like, if that is seven miles, then how long is this whole thing going to be? It's me, it is me, sorry about that. I think I can have a fun in there. They didn't give me a kill switch. Anyways. I'll just...
...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... You're going down 7th Street.
Oh, that's right. I'll call it. I'm gonna be at work. I've been busy, Austin, going to Katie's.
Now I'm gonna have to look for it.
Just as he's bringing him.
6:30? What do they say?
I'll, I'll...
6:30 or 6:45.
Yeah, I tell you, one thing I did not do, and I thought I would have plenty of time to do it, was go through all my emails, bring up the date. My mother wanted to go someplace exciting every day.
She likes being with you.
Yes, she does, and and, boy, I tell you, it takes a lot of patience to take care of parents.
Test, test.
I took him to church.
You're moving forward, and that's the best thing.
Well, retarded.
Thank you so much.
I can't put my keys in my apartment. So I moved on out to eat, I checked there, I checked the church, I even checked her personal papers, she was in that place, and by the way, she calls me, I found them. We got your other place.
Any numbers of the...
Let me go get my other stuff here, so I won't lose that.
See you later.
See ya.
Mayor, I have things for you to sign. Don't leave too far.
I tell you, if I have a project coming, I may just come down here tonight and just sit here in these chairs, yeah, when the desk is at the right height.
Now that we have chairs, I don't have to...
Right.
She was, right, she did, yes.
So she might as well sit in front of me, I said.
I thought so.
Whether she do it or not.
She just...
And they spent more than that.
This morning, it wasn't the Gaffer, anyway, I saw your plan more, advisor.
And then pass the, pass the note.
That would be super cool.
We could, because we can use that for something in there that we never even thought of, because now...
Sign things and not talk too much, because sometimes my...
Some furnishings or something.
Yeah, yeah, we go, we could do something. What I'm talking about, straight down to my hand.
Amanda, but I'll copy Marjorie, because I thought she was kind of on the grand...
Boy, this place is going to be busy when that breed-specific band comes back here.
Or keep a track of it or something.
Actually, let me grab one. These return that way, and these from on top. You want these back in or just...
Is all of the storage for this onsite, or at some point, does this go to touch to the salt mine or someplace?
There's a lot of stuff that hold that hatch.
I finally went down there for the first time last year. Took me 19 years to get up my nerve, but...
We have one little storage room that's all our own, and then we have some stuff stored in the next one.
So you're responsible for keeping the salt mine doesn't do it, you have to...
They have a copy of it, but if I have to recall anything, or if I send anything back to them, we're the ones that keep stuff like that.
You go get it, or someone got it?
We usually have a courier between the salt mines and us, and they go get it. Salt mine's a poet, courier goes to me.
You don't have to actually physically...
We have before, and then we have taken a man load of boxes to the salt mines, and once we get them there, they, then the workers will take them down.
Backdrops are worse. Hard, I mean, suspenseful, ever and ever.
It was good.
Yeah. It's awesome, you email.
Yeah. And they have also got...
He's like, I'm looking for your email, then, and then you want to kind of hook us up and we just kind of have conversations, but...
Yeah, yeah. Get a date, but you can at least give us a date, right? Right. Right. Yes, sir. Hey, yeah, I'm glad. Can you tell me? Okay. Well, I need to go finish with you, but it's nice to not be having your... This week, my son is home, but he didn't serve home for him. Well, he goes, he's somewhere on the... Show forward, show forward, forward, forward. And after, it's, it's not like some areas, it's not, it's not... Well, we decided we're not going to do the... She's got a house, she's... We've been very busy. Something about the roof, but something about running...
Well, I think that's why, why we have that... Well, he's always thinking, are there... You could be a merchant, too, or something like that. I mean, how do you... How are you affecting your CPI and...
Good luck, man. I'm not always...
And so we can...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. Like, I feel like I'm, like, at least halfway, like, not like a whole, not like all the way, but, but, not like, not like a pure smart, but like, at least, like, are you normally putting my pants on correctly? And I'm telling you, it's just, it's such a long-term, like, how do you first pull that away from the... Right now. Wow. This is... I mean, I think, I mean, I think you... Somewhere in, so, and, and, because, and, I mean, like, I think we could still have a discussion about what, in that area, I just don't see any reason why you would ever curb him down, keep him, be a wide retreat.